We placed over top of the geo grid. Then followed by one to two feet of soil material. Um, the clay cover is actually going to be excavated from an onsite burrow, um, which I identified the last time I was here and I'll show you a map here in a minute. Um, and then that area will be reclaimed following construction. Um, we'll be doing moisture analysis tests to make sure that we can properly compact the materials. We may need water in order to, um, maintain the proper moisture within those materials. Uh, and I believe that the plan is from the contractor to purchase water from the, um, city. The site will be revegetated where we are putting the soil seal on. This is far below where the actual surface expression of the fire is, so there's no danger to that revegetated area causing, additional fire danger. Um, and then we've also been working with the landfill to use approximately 500 cubic yards of the compost that they have, um, made there. Uh, we did some test pits, um, to identify the clay material onsite. They are just north of the, um, fire area. And, um, so TP3 on your map is actually where we will be, um, using the, the clay material for Burrow. It had just the perfect, um, clay content and it's very close for hauling. We won't have to cross the county road. Um, and there's already a sort of a road driven in there, so it's, it's, it's the ideal location. We've got very lucky. Um, so the idea, the, um, plan for that is to remove the topsoil, excavate the clay out, um, and then backfill and, um, revegetate that area and it's within a bunch of oak brush. It, it's been my experience in South Canyon that the oak brush comes back almost faster than I can get out there and cut it. So, um, I'm confident that we will have a, a good, um, reclamation of that borrow pit. So this is your packet. These are the maps that were in your packet. You can see there's the bio site and the balloon on the, the map is rather large. It's, it's definitely not as big as the, um, cover area. Um, and then you can see the cover site is, um, outlined in green. So this is a schematic. You don't need to get into the nitty gritty here. All this is showing is that there's a run on ditch above and surrounding the, um, soil seal area. We have areas for temporary topsoil stockpiles. So we'll be scraping the topsoil off before we start excavating, um, topsoil. And, you know, this part of the state, uh, is worth its weight in gold, so we don't want to bury it. Um, and then you can also see where the bio site is. On this map is also, um, all of our erosion BMPs. And the colors just to show the thickness of the fill. So you can actually see the areas in red, um, on the top part of this are those deeper subsidences, um, that will get more fill and then some of the other areas will get significantly less or actually be cut before covered. Uh, and this is the borrow pit, same, same thing. It's just kind of the schematic for, um, these are really for our contractor, um, for doing the final grading. So we bid the project in the fall of 2018 and it was awarded in spring of 2019 to Reams Construction. They're a construction company based in Naderita. We ran into some issues with our, uh, cultural resource compliance with SHPO, and, um, which held up our NIPA, um, authorization to proceed. So we were able to resolve all of those issues. Fortuitously, I guess would be the right term, or maybe not so much for the South Canyon folks, but, um, there was a large cultural resource survey done, um, when the mountain bike trails were, were put in. Sorry. And, uh, so anyways, they, um, we were able to use Eric Twitty was the gentleman that did that survey and he's actually one of our contractors. So we were able to work with him, um, to do a little bit of additional field work to go out and look at the borrow area. And then we were able to use that, um, his previous survey because our entire area had been surveyed by him, uh, for our cultural resources compliance with, um, section 106. So the other issue that did come up, um, was the, um, last year, the South Canyon Coalition, um, had asked us, uh, about calving season and how we were going to be managing that. At this time, we are unaware of any, um, closures by parks and wildlife. Um, I will be reaching out to them again, um, just to verify that. However, we are very sensitive to that and our idea is not to come in and kind of, you know, make people upset or, you know, impact the elk. The area that we're working doesn't, other than the borrow area, doesn't have any surface cover. There's not really a whole lot of food. It's not an area that we have, we have observed over the years of any bedding or anything like that. We will be doing a visual inspection of our excavation areas, um, each day prior to beginning work, during calving season. We are planning on starting between April 15th and June 1st, but likely closer to June 1st than April 15th. Um, our contractor has committed to starting by June 1st. But, um, because he's been sitting on an awarded contract for a year, we are not exactly the top of his priority. He has another contract going, so he is committed to being here by June 1st. We're hoping to start mid-May. It could be a little earlier. It could be a little later. The project will likely take about 90 days. The winning bid was 404,000. And, uh, we do have an addition, some additional work included in that contract. It's actually on the west side. And these are some carcinite signs along the mountain bike trail, warning people of the mine fire above. So, um, this is the mountain bike trail, um, map and these would be along the tramway trail. Mostly, uh, I think there's three or four locations along the tramway trail where you could actually leave the trail and walk up into the mine fire area. And so these, the signs will, they're going to be like those, you know, carcinite poles that the forest service puts up. We have some really nice mine fire signs, but they would last probably two days on the trail before somebody stole them. So we thought for longevity, we would go with the, uh, the less aesthetically pleasing carcinite posts along the trail. And then we do have some future work planned. This is actually a photo of the west side. It was very active last week when I was there. This is a photo just from last week. We would like to establish, um, an access for South Canyon West. The existing road is, I'm standing on it, looking up. You can actually see it. It's not much of a road anymore. Um, it's, it's so steep. And it crosses the, the mountain bike trails. So, um, we would like to work with the city of Glenwood to establish a new access route to this fire, to do a little bit of mitigation work up there. We would also like to develop a plan for South Canyon East. This is likely going to be something along the lines of grout curtain or some other physical barrier that we can get ahead of the fire and block the coal seams. So a grout curtain would be a series of bore holes where you, um, insert grout. So it'd be like, almost like a cement wall, um, between, and, um, you know, between the, the burning area and the non-burning area. And then we're going to continue to monitor and manage the surface fire danger, both on the South Canyon East and West sides, um, as long as our funding allows. That's all I've got. Do you guys have any questions?
Is there any connection to this to the hogbacks?
To the?
To the hogback fires that are further towards?
Yeah, so it's all within the grand hogback structure. So the geological structure, the coal seams are very steeply dipping. And, um, that we have, uh, we have roughly 40 coal mine fires in the state and I want to say two thirds or more of those are within that hogback structure. So.
Is it expected that this clay cap will kind of slow the fire down quite a bit on the east side and maybe drop the temperatures?
That's what we're hoping for. Yes.
Do you know if the fire has crested the, um, top of the ridge yet?
From what we can tell, it has not yet and that, but we are fighting time here. And that's why we're trying to do this so that we can buy ourselves a little bit of time to establish a, um, a method to get in there and try and get ahead of it.
Rick?
I was just curious, so where does the clay come from?
The clay is, um, it's just, it's just in the soil. It's, and it's several feet deep, seven or?
Yeah, it's seven, six to seven feet deep. It's pretty much clay all the way through.
Yeah.
So right down below the seam?
Yeah, so if you know where the, the east side fire is, just, it would be just to the south. There's a bit of a, a draw. I want to, it's not really a, it's just a, a part, piece of the hogback, where it's been kind of eroded out a little bit and it's kind of in between, um, the fire area and that next draw.
So, and then you reclaim that area, uh, with vegetation?
Yep, we're gonna, we'll re-vege that area. You know, we're gonna scrape the topsoil and we're not going to go all the way to, to bedrock. We'll, we'll make it so that it's, doesn't create a swimming pool area. You know, it'll be graded to match the existing grade.
So it would be like no man-made cliffs there or anything or fall offs?
No, no, nothing like that. Any other questions? And we would, if, if any of you are at all interested in coming out while we're out there working, do not hesitate to reach out. I'm hap, we're happy to give a tour, um, while we're out there working.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks, Ter.
Great presentation. All right, up next, request for assistance on a school-based health center. Into your elbow, Rob.
I think it goes a little later.
Okay, should I just drag it on with the desk?
Thank you.
Before Rob gets out, before Matt Bennett leaves, I just wanted to wish Matthew Bennett a happy birthday. It's his 30th birthday today.
This thing is taking forever.
I forgot to do. I was gonna do a happy birthday.
Yeah, I don't know that.
See, I had a happy birthday to Tony.
Sorry. See if I can get it to, to do what I'm asking it to do. There it is. Yeah, I know. It's kind of ironic. All right. That's pretty good, actually. I'm impressed.
No.
We rock. There you go. That's good. Okay. Now we got it.
I can't touch the bottom. There we go.
Hi, everyone. My name's Ross Brooks. I'm the CEO and a patient at Mountain Family Health Centers and the obnoxiously proud parent of a fifth grader and a second grader in the Roaring Forks School District. My partner in crime.
Rob Stein, Superintendent of the Roaring Forks Schools.
Thanks for having us here this evening. We're going to talk a little bit about school-based health centers and expanded access to care in our community. So we've been working in partnership between Mountain Family Health Centers and the Roaring Forks School District for several years, setting a vision that every student in the Roaring Forks Schools would have access to affordable, comprehensive, integrated medical, dental, and behavioral healthcare, regardless of family circumstances, residency status, economic means, or any other documentation status. And to make this possible, we've been working to build, uh, increased access to school-based health center services across our community. We've set goals, working together to better coordinate and integrate school-based access to care, to really expand access to medical, dental, and behavioral healthcare across our community, to extend the services to Glenwood Springs where there are gaps in care. And we'll show you a little bit of data around that compared to Basalt and Carbondale within the school district. And ultimately to open a school-based health center in Gl, in the Glenwood Springs High School in the summer of 2020. Rob?
Yeah, um, I'm not going to read everything on these slides. You guys all have them and, and you can read some of the details, um, on your own if you haven't already. But I just want to emphasize, um, that we really started this as a process trying to figure out how we could provide more equitable access to more kids for healthcare in our communities. And we can, conducted a very thorough process over the last school year. Um, we retained the Colorado Association of School-Based Healthcare to facilitate our study because they just have a lot of experience across the state and how to increase access to healthcare. And we engaged partners across the community, um, all the providers, the two local hospitals, the two neighboring school districts. And everybody was at that, at the table, looking at what we can do for our youth, not should. We didn't start with, should we build a health center in one of our schools? Um, we also got a lot of advice from statewide agencies. And at the end of the whole process, um, we really, um, we, 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 um, could summarize into a few key findings. First is that there is an inequitable acts, um, distribution of access to health services in our communities that the Roaring Forks School serves. You can see there, um, Glenwood Springs is reaching fewer youth and it's reaching far fewer adolescents than Carbondale and Basalt. And we need to do a better job coordinating health services. So, um, what we see is that there's a cobbled to debt, cut together range of services, uh, mental, behavioral, and medical health, um, and they're not coordinated. So we're not using our, our scarce resources efficient, as efficiently as possible. So that's part of that is creating a health center as a hub to coordinate all those services, um, for us, regardless which provider, because we still have these vital partnerships with other organizations like the county and Mines Springs and, um, Hope Center who, who we want to continue to utilize. We just want it better coordinated, um, and used more efficiently. There's a huge gap in serving adolescents, especially that's an age at which adolescents are less likely to access. They're starting to take responsibility for their own care. So their parents aren't scheduling their well-child visits and getting them the care they need. And then, of course, adolescents are starting to present unique medical and, uh, mental health challenges that younger kids don't. And so it's especially important that we capture adolescents, um, better than we have been in the past. And then finally, whether or not we build a health center, we learned a lot through all these conversations with all the providers in the community about how we could do better by working together to establish key indicators that we're all working on, um, to aspire to improve the health of, of our youth. So, uh, you know, a health center in one school is a piece of a larger, larger effort to, um, make sure that we have community-wide goals and that we're working collectively.
Okay, so as part of our, our, uh, partnership and planning process, Mountain Family Health Centers, our organization's going to open a school-based health center in the Glenwood Springs High School as of July 1st of 2020. Uh, we're also going to consolidate the sponsorship of the existing school-based health centers in Basalt and Carbondale. Right now, there's a school-based health center in the Basalt High School, elementary school and middle school, and the Carbondale High School as well. So we'll consolidate, uh, the sponsor, the medical and fiscal sponsorship of this four school-based health centers concurrent with opening a new school-based health center in Glenwood Springs. Ultimately, we aim to integrate medical and dental and behavioral healthcare, plus in the future pharmacy services for, uh, school-aged children and their families within the school-based health centers. And ultimately to ins, ensure access to equitable care for those families. Why us? Well, uh, we're an organization that has existed for 42 years, providing access to affordable, integrated medical, dental, and behavioral healthcare. Uh, we've been on the western slope for more than 22 years and today we serve more than 21,000 predominantly low-income families and individuals within our community. We've got a strong track record of team-based care and have a bunch of nerdy healthcare awards called Patient-Centered Medical Home Awards and Advanced Primary Care Practices. What that really means in, uh, real people speak is that we coordinate care and provide care in an affordable basis for families. As we look to the Glenwood Springs School-Based Health Center, we are going to renovate the space in the Glenwood Springs High School and we'll show you a quick snapshot of that a little later in the presentation. We've got to purchase medical, dental, behavioral health, and information technology equipment and ultimately hire the staff to provide the services. The startup budget for that project has a $363,000 capital expense for medical exam rooms, IT systems, behavioral health facilities, et cetera. And we've got funding sources today, uh, funding from the Delta Dental Foundation, uh, the Colorado Health Foundation, and other private donors, leaving us with about 53,000 remaining in capital expenditures. A side note, uh, it, we also have support annually for operating expenses of 21, uh, excuse me, 25,000 from Garfield County, from the Human Services Commission. So our request this evening is for $50,000 of one-time expenditure to support the capital needs of the Glenwood Springs School-Based Health Center. It's roughly 14% of the total project cost. And our recommendation is that we use carryover, carryover reserves from the marijuana fund to fund this project.
So, um, that's a quick shot of, we have prime real estate here. That's sort of storefront property right when you walk in the front entrance of Glenwood Springs High School that we'd like to repurpose as our health center. It's super accessible to students. It provides for that integrated care access. And it also allows for very long hours because the school doors are open from 7:00 AM or earlier, um, to 8:00 or 9:00 PM. So, um, and usually year-round, so it's not like the clinic necessarily would be open those hours. We have the flexibility, um, to have extended care hours and also to serve, um, students from other schools who could come in. It's a very friendly place for parents to come in and they don't have to, you know, walk through the academic corridors or anything to, to reach it.
Cause that's where DECA was and now where the Air Force thing is.
Exactly.
And there's been a gun somewhere else.
And I believe that's it from the two of us. We might some other community members up, but maybe we should pause real quick and just see if you've got any questions for Dr. Stein himself.
Tony?
Would it be more efficient to just get all the information on the table for you all and then, and we can all answer whatever questions you have, however you think would be better?
Just a quick question, Dr. Stein. So you mentioned that there's facilities at Basalt and other schools. Those remain open? It's just to augment those services?
The, the big change there is switching, switching our sponsoring organization who's going to be providing those services to Mountain Family. You know, I think Ross spoke to this, but right now the sponsoring organization is on the front range and by having a local sponsor, like say the clinic's, um, closed, then students can go right to the local Mountain Family Clinic and, and that, and that's part of their medical home. So we really feel it's going to give them access to a whole network of services that's far better than what they can do in the school-based centers.
Thank you, Rob.
Yeah, I think maybe we can hear from the other folks that'd be great.
Paul Freeman, Principal at Glenwood Springs High School. I appreciate very much your willingness to, uh, listen to us. I want to try and capture what, uh, we're thinking about with one anecdote that stands, uh, represents many others. I was walking down the hallway of the school and I noticed a young man, um, in some distress. Actually, he was, he was sort of clutching his stomach and, uh, looking, uh, unsteady on his feet. And I went over to him and, uh, I talked to him about his condition, uh, and suggested that, uh, he should as soon as possible get to a doctor. And the expression on his face told me more eloquently than anything he could say that going to a doctor was just not going to be happening. That, that there wasn't any way to do that. Uh, and really his strategy at that point was to start to look as well as he could to get me to stop talking to him. Now imagine that situation had we, uh, a school-based, a health clinic in the, in the building. Uh, we could have dealt with that there and then. The, the other thing I would say is that, um, you know, adolescents, uh, you could, they could be described as a bundle of neuroses. I mean, they can be described as many things, but, um, and among the neuroses that they suffer from is worrying about the way that they're changing, um, and about the things that they've heard, uh, and that maybe they've got that thing. And it's difficult for them to figure out how to deal with that. That the, the health clinic would, would, uh, really help with that problem. I'm also going to mention that Risa Hayes, um, who I think many of you know, respected, um, psychological counselor, um, uh, wants you to know that she stands strongly behind this, uh, project as well. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jenna Leas. I'm the Chama Program Manager at Valley View Hospital, as well as a parent to a junior at Glenwood Springs High School and an eighth grader at Riverside, um, in Newcastle. But, um, I'm came today as requested, um, by Paul Freeman, but, um, I support this 100%. I'm also an ER nurse, um, at Valley View and, um, just knowing the, the, um, patients that we see on a daily basis, the families that come through and the importance of not operating in silos and the patients that come in and seeing the families and knowing how frequently the information that we're giving out in the emergency room and knowing that it's not transcribing over to the families and getting back to the schools. A lot of the times, if a patient or a student, um, were able to present to the school and went to the clinic and told them their problems there and then that was able to be relayed to the pa, to the family at that time and it was all able to be taken care of in one location, I feel like it would be much more of a collaborative process rather than, um, being kind of piecemealed out. I think it's an important process for a lot of these kids, as it was mentioned before. As they're getting to be juniors and seniors, they're taking care of themselves a lot more and taking that initiative to be kind of owning their healthcare, stepping forward. A lot of these guys aren't, um, their parents aren't taking to the doctors anymore and they're kind of having to own that themselves. So having the access to, um, take that initiative and make it happen is, um, huge just for their healthcare alone. So, um, that would be an incredible opportunity for them. So this would be quite an opportunity, I think. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jocelyn Kochivar and I'm one of three counselors at Glenwood Springs High School who has a caseload of students. And the three of us work, you know, extensively on a daily basis with dozens of students and probably, um, more so as a larger team of people, including interventionists and prevention specialists and administrators and counselors and our school nurse, who, um, identify students who have needs and aren't thriving due to, sometimes it's just academics, but oftentimes it's physical and behavioral health, um, more often than not. And we work really hard to connect these students with resources around the community. We have a great team of people who know who the right person is to call and what, what resources we need to wrap around each student and their family. But the gap that I envision a school-based health center closing is actually making the connection happen because we can't make a kid get to a resource. We can tell them about it. We can help them make an appointment and we can, um, call ahead and, and we can make introductions, but making that connection actually happen tends to be more difficult than you would expect. And so I think for efficiency's sake, it would be huge, but also the cost of, um, missing appointments and rescheduling appointments and, um, transportation to some resources that are in the valley, but not necessarily accessible for a teenager. And I think that in my mind is one of the most valuable assets of a school-based center. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, are you part of the presentation as well?
Yes.
Okay. Just trying to make sure to avoid the public comments and?
I'm going to read because, um, I had a very long presentation and then I was told that I have limited time, so I need to stunt track. So, um, my name is Betty Lucas and I was born and raised in Glenwood Springs, Colorado. Growing up here as a Mexican-American individual, it is safe to say that our Latino population has significantly increased since the eighties and nineties and I have been fortunate enough to have the lens of a student, mother, friend, and professional. Back in my family, I often struggled financially and I grew up in a very humbled household. My parents worked hard to provide for us and although Medicaid, food stamp, and food stamps were available to my parents, we never qualified. Thankfully, status wasn't an issue for my family, thus giving us an extraordinary advantage compared to many around us. Without going too far into detail, I became a product of my own environment and those around me watched my mental and physical health decline throughout my educational life here in Glenwood. As I reflect on this now, I'm able to identify that I yearned for someone to help or at least recognize that I was hurting. I struggled from elementary and middle school, but during my high school years is where it really became a real problem. Going to counseling wasn't an option because A, it was expensive. B, in our culture, in our culture, it was stigmatized as being crazy. If the resources we have now were available for me back then, like the student-based health center, it would have helped many aspects of my life. As a professional, um, here at the Roaring Forks School District, I work at Soper Cell Elementary School at Family Liaison. Um, I've worked with many high school girls as well, who have had similar stories, if not are traumatic and tragic. The only downfall of some of their stories is not being able to access the treatment and care due to barriers such as time on the parent's behalf, transportation, and most importantly, status. I had a handful of students openly showing me their cuts from attempted suicide, which is followed by a heart-wrenching feelings of desperation for help. When I worked at Basalt High School, students were able to- When I worked at Basalt High School, students were able to tap into such crucial services as a preventative measure and much-needed wraparound services and collaboration amongst agencies and providers. The students I have mentored at Glenwood Springs High School show incredible grit and promise to a better future, but feel like they are set up to feel lacking this resource in our community. For the sake of time, I have only scratched the surface, I can say without a doubt that in my job as family liaison, we have, we have been experiencing a significant decline on families reapplying for Medicaid, SNAP, and even free and redo lunches, for the fear of the public charge rule. By opening this much-needed resource in our community, it would be solving the all-too-familiar family glitch problem with health insurance for all regardless of status and financial hardships. Let's not fail the children, um, let's not fail our children the way that I and many others have fallen through the cracks. Thank you.
All right, is there any questions for the presenters? Counselor Step.
Um, just a couple of questions real quick, I'm going to rattle them off, and you can take it from there. Is this just children who will access this healthcare? Is it just for lower income? Um, and is there any cost incurred by the family when kids access the healthcare? And if you need transport to the hospital, is that taken care of as well?
Yeah, I think so. Repeat them if I don't get them all, Paula, thank you for a great question. So, uh, it's intended mainly for students of the, of the, um, school in Basalt, Carbondale, and Glenwood Springs. Uh, family members can access care there as well. Ultimately, we prefer that family members access care at one of our hub sites in Glenwood Springs or Basalt, where we have, uh, integrated physical, behavioral, and dental healthcare onsite there. That's typically where we prefer that the adults go, but adults and family members can access care in the school-based thing as well. Uh, cost is on a sliding fee scale for all patients. Uh, when folks come into Mountain Family Health Centers, we try to get you on Medicaid or the Child Health Plan, CHIP+ or, uh, get you access to affordable commercial health insurance product. If you don't qualify for any of those, you go on a sliding fee scale based on your family's income or the individual's income, so there is a small copay for all services, uh, with a few exceptions, but that can be as little as five dollars. Uh, transportation to the hospital in emergencies, uh, we'd like you to either get yourself to the hospital, preferably not use the, um, ambulance service, that's a pretty expensive way to get to the hospital, uh, but that's an option. Ultimately, we won't get you in for primary care to keep you out of the hospital. That's the goal of a, a school-based health center, a community health center, is to address our physical, mental, oral health wellbeing, so we can stay out of the hospital as much as possible. Did I get them all?
You did, I was just concerned about that poor kid clutching his belly who might have an appendicitis.
Yeah, well, in that case, we would probably call the ambulance or quickly get the child to Valley View Hospital.
Great, thank you.
Just one other thing, too, is, um, we have a principle with all of our family services, that we serve any child who lives in our region, in our district boundary, so it's not like you have to be a student even enrolled in our school district, we have, you know, um, private school students and charter school students that would also be just as eligible for services. Of course, it's situated in the high school where the adolescents are, uh, but we don't restrict access to other, other children who live in the community.
Counselor Wulman.
Thank you. Um, just, I mean, one minute or two thing, is it twelve months of the year? They open twelve months of the year, is that my understanding?
Uh, it's open primarily during, uh, the school year, and then we go to more of a skeleton staff during the summer.
Okay, and, um...
And we'll have to figure out a balance of that, we haven't figured that out for summer twenty-twenty-one yet.
If a kid just walks in without the parents, does he need parent permission?
Um, there, we try to enroll all the kids, uh, with their parents early on in the school year and throughout the school year, but we do provide a mechanism for confidential visits as well.
In your study, the stakeholder survey, the thing that concerned me is kids saw thirty-three percent suicide, parents said seventy percent, seventy percent of the kids are feeling sad, staff felt thirty-three percent were sad. Um, I understand there's a mental health component to that, is Mind Springs participating in this?
Um, I think today, and Rob can correct me if I'm wrong, Mind Springs counselors are in the Glenwood Springs School-Based Health Center, and Hope Center counselors are in the Basalt and Carbondale, uh, school-based health centers. Uh, we partner both Mind Springs and Hope Center, and Mountain Family today has fifteen behavioral health clinicians that work right alongside the medical clinicians and the dental clinicians, so every single patient at Mountain Family gets something called the PHQ2, which really asks that patient how they're doing with their mental health. I, I'm a medical patient, and I get asked that question every single time I go to Mountain Family Health Centers, and, and the philosophy is, uh, these are connected, and we ultimately want to be able to serve you right then and there if you're struggling with depression or substance abuse, or just feeling down about life, and same will be true in the school-based health center as it is in our clinics.
The last question I have, and thank you for all the information, um, you talk about capital costs, and you're asking us for capital, what's your operating, how are you going to cover operating costs?
Yeah, great question, Charlie. So, um, the operating cost for the Glenwood Springs School-Based Health Center is roughly five hundred and fifty, six hundred thousand dollars a year.
Say, I'm sorry, say again.
Uh, roughly five hundred and fifty, six hundred thousand dollars a year of operating cost. The Basalt, Carbondale School-Based Health Center is about nine hundred thousand dollars a year of operating cost. Uh, the way we cover that is multifaceted and unfortunately kind of complicated, uh, but the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, CDPHG, provides operating grants for school-based health centers around the state, so that covers part of the cost, and ultimately subsidizes care for uninsured, uh, families or kiddos in the schools. Uh, and then we also bill Medicaid or commercial health insurance like a private practice would as well. Ultimately, the, the combination of state funding, um, in-kind space from the school district, and then billing payers like Medicaid or CHIP or commercial health insurance is how we cover the operating cost.
So that can be run through, uh, Mountain Family Health?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know, this is sort of a tidbit, but it's important to the reason, one of the reasons that we switched sponsoring organizations to Mountain Families, Mountain Family is a federally qualified health center, and as a community health center, they have different Medicaid reimbursement rates, so per patient who's a Medicaid patient, they see more dollars for each patient than the current sponsoring organization does, um, and so in terms of having sustainable business, it, it's more likely that this will thrive over time. Of course, nobody wants to be in the health industry right now, um, but it, um, it's the most sustainable model we envision, you know, to make sure these clinics are here to last. Thank you.
Counselor Borges.
Thank you for this presentation, very informative. I think the survey is really interesting, too, because, um, you know, the problems that students say they have aren't the same problems that adults say that they have, parents and, uh, staff members, and so, looking at this as sort of a student-centered sort of problem, issues, you know, a lot of it seems to be mental health. I'm just curious if you, uh, have thought about, you probably have, uh, some sort of peer intervention, uh, within the high school, so that it's not all necessarily a student getting a problem solved by talking to an adult, and...
Yes, we have, and we're also investing a lot in what we call Tier One, like social, emotional wellness, and, um, and, you know, creating the conditions in which healthy adolescents thrive and younger children thrive, you know, before we even get to, you know, the mental health problems. Um, so we've been working a lot as a school district to integrate programming, you know, into our classrooms, into all that we do every day. Um, in addition, for example, I was just meeting with the three city or town managers that, you know, in Carbondale, Basalt, and, um, and Glenwood Springs, to try to establish a better strategy and a better framework for when things go beyond what schools can normally do in their programming, for that next level of mental health support or intervention, to make sure that there are coordinated efforts and that we kind of level out the resources, because what we've done as a school district is very aggressively pursued grant funding, but it always comes with strings, it sunsets after three years, or it can only be used in this town or whatever, but if we had more of a community-wide response and more of a community fund to help level some of that out, as we maintain our efforts, we can even out some of the bumps and increase, you know, maintain a higher level of better coordinated mental healthcare. I totally agree, our most pressing need for our kids is, is really probably mental health services, and that also relates to school safety, right? So, um, the more we can do on the preventive side and early intervention side, the better, and it relates to the substance issues, which I was taught, last time I was here, we were talking about nicotine, I think the time before that it was cannabis, these are all related.
And I suppose that that also pertains to staff and training staff, how to, you know, sort of intervene at appropriate times, and, uh...
Yeah, just for example.
Not just see everything as a problem, coming late to class, as opposed to looking at some of the underlying issues that students...
Yeah, yeah, a lot of, against programming on the proactive side, preventive programming, also, all of our staff, for example, have been trained in the last two years in suicide, um, um, you know, early, early indicators of suicide and when to refer a student to an administrator or a, uh, uh, counselor for follow-up. So we're, we're doing a lot more professional development in the mental health arena than ever before.
Thank you.
Counselor Cop.
I just had a question, actually, Charlie asked most of the questions about funding and that type of thing, but I was curious, so what's the staffing level that will be typical of the clinic?
Great question, we always want to have, uh, one medical provider, or one behavioral health provider, and one dental health provider on staff all the time. We complement that with community care workers, case navigators, and others that can work in concert with the school and with other community partners, but, uh, really staffing models, one medical, one dental, one behavioral health provider.
Okay.
And then we're committing to maintaining our level of services, so we have counselors, we have family liaisons to work with, you know, like students who need next-level services or whatever, um, and, um, and then school nursing staff, so we're making sure we're not, you know, we're going to maintain that consistent level of servicing, and then this is really, you know, a huge addition on top.
Great, okay, thanks.
All right, uh, seeing no further questions, let's open this to the public for any public comment. All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for a motion and/or further discussion. Charlie?
Yeah, I would move to approve the allocation of fifty thousand dollars to the capital cost, um, coming out of the Marijuana Reserve Fund.
Second.
Then moved by Charlie, seconded by Tony, is that okay?
Yes.
Further conversation?
At the top of my motion?
Sure, absolutely.
I, I think it's a great program, I'm, I'm really happy to see this, Ross, I know you run a great program, so I'm glad to see you're involved in this. Uh, my biggest concern frankly is, it was about the summer, because these kids get used to going in there, and then suddenly there's nothing for them in the summer, you know, if they feel like they got a semi-gate of the stuff that, you know, Paul Freeman was talking about, even if they got a great resource at the hospital, they're going to know to go there, so, I, I want you to keep that in mind, and I understand you, probably it's the staff that's got to blast, because it is a cost issue, but, I, I just keep that in mind, I think, they, they're going to get used to it, it's a good place to be, so...
So, just a question for all of us?
Sorry, Paula's next.
No, no problem.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to ask, so this is a fifty thousand dollar ask, is this going to be an annual ask every year? One time, yeah, I just want to be sure that we know what we're voting on.
I think my comments want to talk about health services, you know, very separate on this, but, um, you know, full disclosure, this, this will help some of our clinics, but...
Never want to preclude that.
For the record, yeah.
Go ahead, Paula.
Mine is just a comment saying that I really appreciate this, I think if we keep our kids healthy, then their education is better, and both of those are better for our community moving forward, so, thanks.
Yep, you're here.
Normally, I hate providing health for children, so, I'm, I'm going to vote for this, but, uh, no, thank you very much for what you guys are doing, I think this will be fantastic, I think Charlie as well, one of the advantages of having a health clinic in the school where the kids are at during the school years, it's, it's, it's right there. When they're not there in the summer, it probably loses some of that advantage, and then Mountain Family Health Clinic, which is two blocks away, is going to be open, so...
I understand, I understand, yeah.
All right, uh, any other comments? Another question.
Hershey yes, Step yes, Godish yes, Karp yes, Voorhees yes, Willman yes, Washington has.
Thank you, guys. Good luck, everyone.
Thank you.
I was joking, I was, I was kind of on the Tony train of like voting against everything that's happening.
I am just, I appreciate it, I read your memo.
All right, uh, request for, uh, no, that's, we already, Greater Roaring Fork Housing Coalition. In order to get back on schedule, you have minus two minutes. I'm kidding. Backwards.
I can write backwards, but I can't talk backwards, I can write backwards almost as quickly as I can write forwards, because I was really bored in school. Anyway, um, the Housing Coalition Group has been a steering committee that's been meeting for over two years now. We, uh, created the study, so we have defined and have the data in front of us about what the need is. The, uh, study has demonstrated that we need, um, about two thousand units of low-income housing at sixty percent AMI and below, and we need about the same amount, nineteen hundred units of middle-class housing from one hundred percent up to one hundred and forty percent of AMI. Now, this isn't just a housing needs issue, it's also an economic development issue, but not in terms of just the work, uh, the corporations and the business people needing workforce and needing to keep them in the area. Turnover costs for a fifteen-dollar-an-hour job is ten thousand dollars. I can walk you through those numbers, but later. So there's a big cost to our employers as well, every time somebody has to leave the area as well. But the economic development piece that I want to talk about is, when you're ever doing economic development, one of your first strategies is to plug the leaks in your leaky bucket before you start pouring in more opportunity on top. And the study demonstrated that people spend fifty-four million dollars a year more than what is considered affordable in our region, from Aspen to Parachute, and around the corner to Eagle and Gypsum, which is our commuter area that we, um, survey. So, thirty percent of your gross income is what you are expected, the national average, the definition of affordable housing, pay for your rent or your mortgage, and fifty-four million dollars more than that thirty percent is being spent by people who are rent or mortgage burdened. So, that is fifty-four million dollars of discretionary funds that is not being spent in our restaurants, in our stores, in our recreation activities, in our healthcare systems. People can't afford to do many of these things because what they're spending on housing instead. So this two-year effort now is trying to coalesce into creating an organization that is going to try to identify sources of funding, to partner with private sector developers to buy down the cost of construction, so that we can make these units affordable to people in these various price ranges. So, for example, one of the developers walked through every single step of the way, and he showed that a three-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath, townhome-style development was approximately a three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and we need prices at two hundred and sixty to three hundred thousand dollars. So we have a sixty to one hundred thousand dollar per unit gap to get people into affordable housing, but we don't know how to close that gap. So, we're looking at creating an organization that we're going to call a coalition for at least one year, with the goal of hiring an expert consultant, someone like having hired Debbie to do the detox research, somebody who's going to spend their days in and totally dedicated to making recommendations. Back to the coalition is what is the structure that is needed, will it be a community development entity, will it be a community housing redevelopment organization with, um, sanction or with authority from HUD? Will it be a housing authority? The inclination at the moment is that, no, we don't want a housing authority, we want more, something that sounds more cooperative, but what I'm asking you to do is to send somebody to our first organizational meeting with the concept of, with the goal of looking at the MOU that you have in front of you, making corrections, making amendments, making it into a document that you think will have support from the community, and having a voice at the table. If Glenwood Springs isn't represented at the table, your perspective and your need isn't represented at the table. This doesn't mean that you're committing to anything beyond this first year, you're committing to finding what this organization's going to be, and, at the moment, the MOU says you can back out with ninety days' notice. I thought that was a little long, but then I realized, since we're talking about nine municipalities, by the time you have notice and public hearings and, and basically get the information out, you probably will need at least sixty days to back out of the organization. least 60 days to back out of the organization, but 90 days may be reasonable. But be at the table to make that particular decision or have that kind of input. And that's all I'm asking for at this point, is to have a designated representative who has the backing of the town council to come to this meeting and be a voice at the table at our first organizational meeting. I'm not even asking you to commit to joining the organization at this point, because until we have that first meeting, really, this is simply a draft of what we think the organization's going to be like. That organizational meeting is going to talk about budget, it's going to be talking about what a job description will be, and I'd like your voice at that table.
Thank you, Katie.
It wasn't less than a good of two minutes, but I tried it.
No, 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 that was, that was as close as it comes. We have some questions for you. Counselor Step?
So I've attended some of these discussions of what you guys are trying to do, and I firmly believe that we can't silo our efforts in finding affordable housing for our communities from Aspen to Parachute and appreciate this endeavor, so I'd like to offer to go ahead and, if the board wants to send a representative, I'd be glad to do that, so. But I know there has been discussion of each community that gets involved contributing some to this. Can you cover that, what you're looking at?
Yes, yes. So at the moment, the last steering committee discussed, how are we going to ask people for money? Well, right off the top of our head, here's one concept. If all three counties contributed only $15,000 each, the remaining amount spread evenly about the nine municipalities would be $6,000 towards this effort for this first year. We don't know, because when we get to this meeting, there are other municipalities who have already committed to provide more money. So this is going to be an important portion of this discussion, which is, we have some municipalities who really can't afford more than $6,000 this year, their budgets are that tight. We have other municipalities who are interested in providing more, and is $15,000 the right amount to ask from the three counties? We'll be having that discussion. But we're certainly looking at a major contribution for this next year, if we have all nine municipalities participating.
Counselor Wilman?
I attended the, when they gave the housing study report at the commissioners' meeting room last spring, and one of the issues that came up was where people travel. And I know within, I'm on the Transportation Commission, Glenwood, one of the things we're concerned about is building more housing maybe west that serve people toward Aspen, and therefore they come all through Glenwood. Has location been talked about as part of this, or is that part of the discussion?
That will be part of the discussion, but it won't be part of the discussion at this initial meeting. That will be what, part of what this specialist that we intend to hire as a contractor will be helping to identify going forward. There have been subcommittee meetings, so each of the municipalities' planning staff have met with some of the steering committee members, and just like you're, what land is available, they went through that particular process. So each of the municipalities has a little bit of a head start on where they think would be appropriate place in their communities to build.
I'm just going to encourage you. I certainly think we should participate in this, but I encourage you to keep that in mind, because I think that's something that we push back, at least from our Transportation Commission, and for me personally, if we're not, if we're building housing to the west that are going to go up to Aspen, because we got more traffic up through Glenwood, we just can't do that.
I completely agree. But I will tell you, Parachute wants more middle-class housing too, because they have no vacancies and almost nothing for sale.
Sure, I understand that. I do understand that, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
County question?
Oh.
Shelley?
Shelley.
Oh, I was just going to say, I also agree that I think we should, we want to be part of this. I think especially this initial step and seeing, we can form this and come together as a region to work on housing, so I support Glenwood Springs sending in representatives. I'm not sure, are you looking more for elected officials, or?
I'm leaving that up, I am absolutely leaving that up to each of the municipalities to make the decision.
Okay, just curious.
For some municipalities, their city managers have been involved, like Paula mentioned before, she's been involved since pretty much the get-go, when she could make it.
Right.
Carbondale has city manager, Basalt has staff. Each town is going with the person rather than the job title.
Okay, so I guess it might be interesting if council could just discuss, like who should be representative?
Hannah also has been at your meeting, so Hannah is also a great option.
Okay, but I definitely support us being part of this.
Thank you.
And appreciate your offer, Paula, too.
Rick?
Yeah, I support this notion too. I think it's overdue. I'm wondering, maybe this is a question for you, Deborah. The way the item is written, it looks like we have like a small amount of money planned to be used to evaluate, reporting by participants in the city's opt-in deed restriction affordable housing program. Are we still going to be doing something like that if we do this, or is there a trade-off?
If we were using this money, we would stop the deed restriction program? I don't think so. I think Jen had a little pot of money in this budget for this kind of idea, and.
Okay, so it's not an either-or, is it?
No.
From, okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
How about you?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Katie.
Is it a consensus in council?
Does the city manager need any direction? I was asking.
I think, did I hear correctly, that everybody's pretty unanimous in the support that we're going to have a representative participate and move this forward?
That works.
Deborah, does it make sense to have Hannah be the one, at least initially?
I think Hannah, yes. I think at some point I may want to step in as well, just as this gets more momentum, along with the member of council.
There's staff time to build and do this, so.
I think Hannah is the most appropriate. She is, we're really getting her more trained to be an affordable housing person, but it is also something, as it gains momentum, I would probably like to be there.
Good luck, good luck of the group, too.
And I'm always very happy to come back and do an update or to support Hannah or Paula in the presentations here on.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Katie. All right, right away landscaping maintenance cost.
Didn't we discuss that?
We did. We are catching up.
Did we have to vote on this, Paul?
Uh, no. No, I think we provided direction. You don't get to vote. You can vote yourself if you want.
I vote yes.
Items 11 and 12, Carl, that I believe that we have to bring these up and then vote to continue them.
Yeah, if you would, just open a couple of hearings on vote, and if I get them to continue them to the first regular meeting.
Can I do that as the single action, or do I have to do this?
Yeah.
Okay. I will.
Can we get an explanation on that, why we're?
Oh, sure. We are waiting for Ross to finalize, kind of make a settlement or a court, like a lease agreement to Center Point. They were very close on that, but just their timing and ours didn't quite sync up for it to be able to wrap that. The size of the deposit is going to happen.
Not there yet?
Yeah, there's just quite a period, and so it's probably a table meeting means that it'll be wrapped up by the time we take action on these resolutions.
Great, thanks.
Counselor Wies?
Yeah, and just to follow up on that, we take this action with the resolutions, we'll essentially be at least holding in abeyance our power to do condemnation at West Glenwood Mall. However, should the negotiations not reach fruition, we can vote again to put that back on the books, and I think.
That's absolutely.
And it's a little-used tool, as I understand, but it's still nice to have that arrow in your quiver.
Absolutely, and it gets used in a variety of ways. We don't think it's going to be necessary in this case. Sometimes it's used in a friendly way to deal with easements and covenants and things like that, so we just don't. In talking through with the new potential developer, Center Point, as well as Ross, it just doesn't look like this is going to be a necessary tool, and it provides some comfort to Ross on their position out there at the mall.
Just want to say thank you, Carl, for moving, using a legal solution, a legal strategy to get us to a very amicable, hopefully, transaction to where we can kind of see some vitality in West Glenwood. So thank you very much for that.
You're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
We're making all your dreams come true.
Not all of them.
Next agenda, Shoshone, right?
Yeah. Don't you have to open the public?
I am going to, yes. Thank you for that reminder. I'll open up resolution 20-10 and 20-9 for public comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back for council comments. Seeing that we've already done that, I will entertain a motion to continue both resolutions to the next, or to a future meeting.
To the first meeting.
So moved.
Okay. Been moved by Shelley, seconded by Tony?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, item number 13, parking enforcement on downtown private properties. You're exactly on time.
You're on time.
I know I am.
Is Lieutenant Kim and I?
I brought the muscle.
Says Matt. Matt is the muscle.
Good evening, council. This is just for discussion points. There's no actions on this item tonight. It is an item that Mr. Kim and I and Mr. Hassel brought to our attention. It's been out there for quite a while. Apparently it's been discussed several times in the past, because this has been around since 2002. It's an ordinance that the police department would like to either clean up or do away with. And you've probably, the staff report we tried to be as thorough as possible on this discussion. I'm sure there's some legal opinion on this. But what the ordinance basically says is that, "In any private parking area within this municipality, signs are posted sufficiently to inform public of the parking restrictions there, and penalties for violation, vehicles, blah, 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 blah." Basically, the ordinance is asking the police department to be the enforcers of these public-private or public-private parking lots. When they're signed properly, I mean, you have to have a lot of caveats to that, because the signage has to be approved by the police chief and such. But we're basically being asked, if somebody comes in and provides a proper signage, I don't know how you'd say no to one if you're already doing it for others, and it kind of opens the police department up for patrolling and being the enforcer within private parking lots, not just in the downtown area, which I think it was kind of intended to be, but across the entire city, if you read the language. So I can have Mr. Kim and I expand upon that, or we can answer questions, but we're kind of looking at as not something that's really easy for the police department to do, that's already generally shorthanded, but something that's kind of outside of their scope.
Counselor Wilman?
Matt, or maybe Terry could answer this. Is this part, we're looking at the parking, the parking portion of the raft, the work we're doing, it's all going to encompass into that, isn't it? Just the overall parking needs downtown and things?
We are going to be parking across the downtown area, but this ordinance is actually kind of an old fragment. You know, we really didn't even realize that it was out there. And I think if we were to incorporate the private parking lots into our study, I think it would be just broader. We're actually focusing just on the public.
But you're considering that there's private parking out there when you look at the public, so.
Yeah.
Okay, right. My general thought is we should get rid of this, so I don't think we should be spending police time doing this. We could use the police to do many other things, including walking around downtown, so.
And the funny part of the ordinance is, is it's not allowing the public to park in those parking lots. If you go to the parking lots that generally have the intentions of this ordinance, there is a sign, a name, "Do not park here, don't come here, no public parking." I mean, they're all over. It's not allowing the public to have more parking, it's just asking them to be the enforcers for those parking situations. So it's an odd ordinance, and it probably meant something in 2002 when this was happening, but I'm not sure that it really comes to 2020 with our current situation.
Counselor Cal?
Okay. I was just curious, do we, do we spend actual police time in patrolling and enforcing these parking lots? Do you get calls on that?
We get complaints on them.
You do? Okay, okay.
There's just a few in town. The way it's written, as Matt said, like the apartment complexes, if they signed it right, we would be tasked with enforcing their parking.
And I would just comment too. I agree with Charlie. I don't think that's the city's job to enforce that on private property. And I also feel like, too, in 2020, maybe wasn't available in 2002, but now wireless cameras and surveillance is so cheap. I mean, if someone wants to watch their parking lot, they can do it on their own.
Counselor Step?
So this is just patrolling, right? Like if somebody bumped into somebody, you backed into them, you'd still have to?
This is just us enforcing private parking restrictions with public.
Counselor Hirsch.
And Lieutenant, I clarified this a little with Carl earlier, but just to be clear for the record, this does not relate to handicap parking enforcement in private lots. We can still, we can, by state law, enforce that. Exactly. Thank you.
Okay.
I would, I wanted to make a motion to remove this from the ordinance. I think this is a relic of a maybe more pro-business 2000, I don't know, I wasn't around, I was here, but I don't know what was going on in O2 here, that was like, I think it's incumbent on these businesses to enforce their own parking, and if they want to call a tow truck, just like the county does, or any other business, when there's people parking in their lots where they're not supposed to be, that's their business, it's not our business. We don't have a large enough enforcement, police force to do this. So I would make that motion to amend the code to remove this, Mr. Hamlin.
So we would probably have to do an agenda.
Yeah, we would have to act it.
I don't need a motion.
Okay, you don't need a motion to remove it, you'd need a motion to what? Just direction?
I just need direction to do it, and I think I got that.
Okay.
It'll come back on a regular agenda item, where we'll just vote on it and open public comment?
Yeah, it'll be a two reading bond ordinance.
Okay.
It was such an oddity, we do want to bring it to as an action item, we want to be able to discuss it.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Right, appreciate it.
Will you be notifying all the places now that are expecting you to patrol?
There's only one parking lot in town that I saw that actually has the municipal code actually on the sign.
I didn't rock every parking lot in town, but I saw one, so. I know where it is.
If they have frequent callers, that might be a good thing for the police department to be like, hey, this doesn't exist anymore, so.
We can contact them.
Sounds like the end of April, have to take care.
Lieutenant Kim and I just want to ask a quick question. Are there other weird, weird things like this that you should be considering? You don't have to say it now, but if there's other stuff like this that you and Chief Darris want to, like, clean up, you know?
Are there any other statutes? Laws, you know, those type laws, like, that don't belong in the code.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, we try to come them up, get inserted for pockets.
I noticed the name.
Oh, I know why that was inserted.
I meant to take that off, I apologize. Really didn't mean to put that on there.
Thank you very much, guys.
This is the quickest discussion of a parking issue we will ever have.
We'll ever have, and ever will have.
Well, can we talk about moving myself, Mr. Man? Hey, parking.
Goodbye, Charlie. Charlie's forgiven himself on the next item, item number 14, consideration of a property purchased at Hale Trippmaner subdivision block 1, lot 2, reception number 870126, whatever that is.
It's a hot item.
You take off my voice?
Yes.
Oh, it's, Mr. Man?
No, it's okay, I got it.
Okay. It's a hot item, get it? I'm burdened to talk. Get it? It's fire. Little fire humor there. Fire humor. I've been in a lot of talks with the chief about fire. We've had heated discussions.
This, just so you know, before you get to that, and you guys can have whatever type of discussion you would like, this is consistent with everything that we've discussed as we were negotiating this contract for purchase of property. Chief is here to answer any questions you have, sort of operationally, but I'm comfortable with where we're at on the purchase contract.
Are there any legal questions for Carl, as this is a contract issue or operational issues for Gary? Yes, Counselor Step?
I just, I read through stuff, and I just didn't understand what the cost sharing of the cleaning up of easements. I mean, are we paying off not to have easements? Are we, what is that exactly?
No, we're really just, everybody's paying their own costs to negotiate and get that easement in place, because this is going to be access for the property, so we just need to make sure that that easement is sufficient for our purposes. It was just something that I think the seller wanted us to acknowledge, that that work still needs to be done as part of the new eligibility space of this contract.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Paul. Counselor Cal?
Carl, will we also get full, like, clean title insurance, and there's no?
Yeah, it'll have all the usual stuff.
Okay, okay. So no old issues with the property that will come up, or?
No, we, Matt has looked at it as well as I have, depending on if Matt's still here or not. I think we're both, and Steve Boyd as well, I think we're all comfortable with where we're at.
Great, okay, thanks.
Great, okay, thanks.
All right, seeing, I just wanted to ask just one other question.
Oh, yeah, of course, sorry.
Sorry about that. Yeah, no, I didn't punch my light. But, um, now, so why is it then the counter offer, uh, that the property cannot be used for, um, the sale of automobile and light truck tires? I mean, it's not like we're going to...
Well, it's because it's immediately behind discount tire.
Oh, yeah, that's kind of what I thought. It seems kind of obtuse to me, but...
You know, sellers oftentimes have various things that, you know, they're trying to maintain the value for their current uses. Um, as a government entity, you know, that's not what we're going to be using it for, and I don't think that's going to be an issue anytime soon.
So, that would probably prohibit Gary from selling any used, uh, fire truck tires?
Yeah.
On those premises, but...
I mean, I, I, we'll just, we'll do it for the Amman Station.
We could, a fire sale right out front.
A fire sale, that's funny.
Oh. That was really funny though, Tony. Yours wasn't.
You really burdened me on that one.
All right. We were running really hot on this, and now we're just smoking. All right.
I just wanted to say, I know, um, Gary's, ever since I got here, Gary has been looking very diligently for a piece of land to put the new and improved West Glenwood Fire Station on. So, we'll have a happy fire chief, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, that, that means you're vested for another five years, correct?
Yeah, that means there's going to be a lot of work going on for the next five years.
Yeah, for at least the next five years. We're going to need some good leadership, Gary. No retiring.
No guarantees.
I know, right? All right. Uh, any public comment? Any, I'll bring it back to council for a motion and/or for the discussion.
So, I would move to, uh, direct staff to enter the purchase agreement for, uh, reception number E70126.
It's been moved by Rick, seconded by Paula. Any further discussion? Let's call the question. Whoops. Sorry.
Hershey, yes. Step, yes. Cop, yes. Cowp, yes. Vorges, yes. Thanks, Gary.
Congratulations.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Good luck.
We'll screw it up. Are you presenting this or is somebody else presenting this?
Your business appropriate discussion.
Let me ask you one.
A couple of times.
All right, item number 615, CC4CA, membership consideration. We had a presentation, I believe, two meetings ago about this item, and we tabled action till a future meeting. This is the future meeting, so.
Okay, and I believe, Shelley, you wanted to lead this discussion, so I was delegating up.
Okay. Um, and I, I do want to say also, I know Erica Sparhawk, she's a Carbondale trustee. She was going to be here, but because this was such a late item on the agenda, I recommended that she send in an email instead. So, she did that. I think you might all have that in the packet or in your email boxes. Just speaking to what they see as a benefit to Carbondale, to being a part of CC4CA. Um, and we did have the presentation last time, and since then, Jacob Smith, I believe, from the organization, sent out the policy statement. I don't know if council all got a chance to read over that, but basically, this is an organization that, um, joins with a lot of communities throughout the state to do some lobbying for, um, statewide legislation and support for policies that affect, uh, climate change and going forward, moving us into more clean energy throughout the state. One of their goals for 2020 is to work towards, um, support for communities that are transition, transitioning, uh, or that are impacted from, say, the closing of a coal mine or the downturn in natural gas, you know, help those communities diversify their economies and work towards, um, more sustainable income streams. So, they've got a pretty broad ranging policy statement and that they work statewide. They work with partnerships with, I believe there are 33 communities now that are involved in the group. Let's see. So, you know, my recommendation is to, that we would join with this group and partner with the others, the other communities across the state. There's a list in the slide presentation, CC4CA members. Um, I won't read all those off, but it's quite right, uh, wide ranging from counties, San Miguel, Summit County, Longmont, Lewisville, Lyons, communities from...
Aspen, Carbondale.
Yes. Uh, Fort Collins, Erie, communities across the state that are, that are working on this. So, I see benefits to Glenwood Springs to joining this organization. I think it's, and I'll just read a few of the reasons that I see. For us, you know, Glenwood Springs, it's, it's in line with the long tradition of our, of our city to be a leader in technology. We were one of the first cities in the state to have electricity and electric lights for its citizens. Um, we're also sure, showing great leadership in our electric department. We've gone 100% renewable, and that has led to, it's shown leadership for, um, Mean in Nebraska, that they're also revising their, their policies. So, I think it puts Glenwood in a leadership role with other communities in the state for environmentally responsible government. Um, it strengthens some of our regional partnerships, which I think always works to, to help the community. And we help to work together for strong economic solutions for transition from fossil fuel dependent communities, and, and our county is one of those, strengthening the economies of the Western Slope and, and, um, Garfield County. So, we can also set an example for Western Slope communities and to our residents, and we show a commitment to a strong, um, future for our city and for the region. So, those are the, some of the reasons that I would like to see us join this organization and participate statewide, help lobby for stronger regulation. But I'd love to hear from council and see what the rest of you think.
What's the question?
I believe it's, Deborah, is it 5,000 a year for the membership for our size community? Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
Is it a year-to-year commitment?
That's a good question.
I think just budget-wise, it'd have to be. We can't encumber a future council to stay or pay for a membership.
Right, so it would be...
So, that's what you're assuming right now?
Yeah, I mean legally, we can't commit past this budget year.
Okay, right.
So, I mean, we can commit to being a member, but if the new council comes in and says...
Okay.
That they don't want to find it. I do, I do have something to say, too.
Yeah. Uh, but Tony's lights.
Oh, no, I, no, go ahead.
No, okay, Paula.
I look at our city as a leader, um, and we're a leader in number one in that we were the ones to, right off the bat, say yes, because we wanted to go 100% renewable energy. And, uh, climate change is really important to me personally. Um, I think it's, you know, something that we have to look at for our future, but, uh, when I really look at this, when I look at this organization, and it was a question that I asked Jacob when he was here, was, you know, what's the relationship with just transitioned communities? And I think it's really important that, um, we do this and acknowledge that there are communities that are impacted by the new rules that are coming into place and, and reaching across and saying, "How can we help you?" I think is important, and I'm glad that this organization does this. So, I support Shelley in this endeavor as well, and I think it's something that we should, um, be a part of, uh, in that leadership role that we have already.
Rick.
Yeah, I support this notion too. I think that, um, climate change is here. There's a scientific basis for it, but, uh, not to get off on the ideological bandwagon. I think it's, uh, just good to, uh, support other Colorado municipalities who are, are working to these issues and looking for, uh, new ideas, uh, ways to sort of combat, ways to sort of address the fact that, you know, the earth is warming. And it also plays into our tourist trade quite a bit too, since, um, a number of people come here, you know, because of our year-round climate. And we may not have that, and I don't know that that's imminent, but, uh, certainly, uh, it fits well with our city's commitment to sustainable economic development, and it also fits, uh, I think, quite well with the fact that we're 100% renewable place, city, and one of the few in Colorado, certainly been one of the few in the United States. So, I think there's some good synergy to come out of this.
Thank you, Rick. Tony.
If you look at the CC4CA website, they list the communities that are a member. Absence from that list are a number of communities like Mesa County, Grand Junction, Colorado Springs. Pitten County is a member, Aspen is a member, but Garfield County is not. And I understand, talking to Shelley before this meeting, that some of what CC4CA does is try to get new direction for counties like this that have to refocus. But our brethren across the street and the people they represent west of here support oil and gas and support that development. I also am concerned about some of this organization and how they dealt with Governor Polis, and there was a scam and a tweet where he was taking direction from them. I guess we could ask him about that tomorrow. But I can't support this, not when we need Garfield County behind us, especially with the issues with the mine. Um, I think until they come on board, I'm not going to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Uh, any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, I think we're ready to take a vote. Oh.
Public, uh, Mr. Public is back with us?
I don't know. Christian, what do you think?
I think he made a wise decision.
Why would you think that? What, what has given you any faith that that would happen? Brian.
Uh, just a quick related comment. It's not necessarily on your specific vote to this organization itself, but on April 17th, we'll be holding a sustainability conference at TMC Spring Valley. Um, they've asked us to present. I'll be presenting there. Uh, they, Kevin, uh, who is the sustainability professor there, has asked me to extend an invitation to one of our city leadership or have Nat come and also speak on our, um, sustainability strategies and efforts. Uh, the conference will cover healthy ecosystems, uh, sustainable economies, and social, social justice, so.
I was just going to say, they also reached out to Shelley and I with the same request. So, we should talk?
Yes, we should talk and coordinate.
Yes.
Great, that's wonderful, Brian. Thanks.
Thanks, Brian.
Before you guys vote, it would be nice to know if you do approve this, um, I would recommend that you take it out of general fund reserves and we'll amend the budget because it's not budgeted. Your other option would be waiting until we did 2021 budget, but we are good with either one.
Do we have, can I just ask, do we have, is there any, um, this would be $5,000, are there any monies available in the electric department's sustainability funding? Would it, would it be in excess to take it from there or not?
You'd be, probably be taking from their reserves. I would, I would just think it is, and of course, you guys can decide which budget you take it from.
Okay.
I would suggest we spend it out of where we spent all these...
General type.
Citywide memberships.
Okay, great, thanks.
Um, I'll, I guess I'll make a comment. Um, yeah, I'm very supportive of this group. I'm very supportive of, uh, moving forward on what our city brand is, which 100% renewable. We're also in a fight for, uh, against this strip mine, and a big part of that is, you know, our branding is, this is going to kill our, um, air, our water, it's noise pollution, it is truck traffic, it is exhaustion, or it's emissions. And so, to take that and to kind of say, "Well, we're not going to join this group," um, that is also fighting for similar things, I, I think is, it's a, it's a mental disconnect for me personally. That being said, I don't want to take any more money out of the general fund, and I think that if we join this group, uh, in January and not right now in March as part of the budget conversation in four months that we're going to start having, um, that's probably a more comfortable place for me. I just, if, if there was a dedicated fund that we could spend this money out of, like the 50,000 for the health center, had a very dedicated nexus of that marijuana money, um, this doesn't. And I'm a little gun-shy spending general fund monies, uh, when it's still March. So, for that reason, I probably won't be voting for it, but I will be voting for it when we talk about the budget here in a couple of months, so. Shelley.
I was going to go ahead and make a motion that the city of Glenwood Springs, uh, join with the CC4CA and that we do take the funding, $5,000, out of the general fund, or, uh, we could also ask them if they'd prorate it for the year, but that's up to that group. And I, I'd just like to say, on top of that, that, to Tony's comments, I, I don't see this as, um, you know, speaking against the county or taking a move against the county. I see it as a, as a show of support for economic health for the county and wanting to work towards a more diverse economy and looking to the future. So, this isn't an anti-oil and gas vote. It's a vote towards a more sustainable future, and, um, so that's why I support this organization.
I'd second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Shelley, seconded by Rick. Any future conversation? Further conversation? Let's call the question.
Hershey, no. Step, yes. Cowp, sorry.
What's his name?
Jonathan Gottes.
Wilman, yes. Vorges, yes. Cowp, yes. Gottes, no.
Motion passes.
Okay, okay, thanks, Ken.
All right.
It's a three-to-three?
It fails.
No, no's, ties are not a positive vote.
Okay.
Okay. Report from city administration.
Okay, I do have a couple of things. I want to remind you, March 12th, there is a regional meeting, um, parachute to Aspen. I think a couple of you have said you're going to come, so I just wanted to remind you and make sure people are still coming. Okay.
I'll be in a state mock trial committee, uh, competition.
The what?
I'll be a state mock trial competitor. I'd love to go.
I suppose we can excuse you for that.
Minor excuse.
That's a good excuse.
If only you were so successful, Charlie.
Yes. Um, you'll know, I think Sarah handed out your swag, that we, um... Got that...
Thanks, Sarah.
To be, like, I've gone to other places and all these cities have these, like, you know, really kind of fancy swag, and we decided this kind of fit where you wanted to go. It's nice, but it's like that sustainable vibe, so.
Right.
What's it for?
It's to charge, like, charge things.
Oh, no, I know what it's for, but why are we getting presents?
Oh, just to have, like, when you go, like, display when conferences come here, we can have something to hand out. We can...
Yeah, that's what you say something.
Yeah.
Good idea, thank you.
Cedar Crest came, and we got the bids in. You won't see it until April, but it came in at a pretty good price. So, just thought that would make you happy.
That's nice.
Virtual, our...
Always good to hear.
Our virtual town hall. I will send this to you, but, um, kind of what we're thinking right now is it, this is next, the 10th, so next week. We're doing a run-through. We tried a run-through before. It had some issues, but this is brand new, so everybody be patient. We've never done anything like this, so.
Have we come here right for that?
But, yes. But you all have a role.
I thought it'd be virtual. I don't have to be here.
You can't...
We don't do virtual meetings, remember?
Remember?
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't want to do that, but this is a virtual town hall.
It's not a meeting, so you guys won't be, like, sitting up there, it's kind of more, like, a different way for us to talk to our constituents, Jonathan, we're going to ask you to do the welcome.
And they're aware they can come here as well?
The what?
And the public is aware they can also come here?
Yes. I'm going to recap 2019 accomplishments, we were going to ask some lucky individuals if they would like to present the strategic vision, which will get in the right page order, maybe not by then.
I don't know who would do that.
I'll do it backwards.
So let me know if you have some interest in that, I think having, like, two of you would be nice, okay, I believe, Rick, you have some interest, does anybody else have some interest with Rick? Rick and Shelley?
I'll take part in that, yeah, sure.
Okay, I think then I've been given the responsibility to go over some budget slides, if I can't give that to Steve or her, that's. Terry Park is going to talk about South Midland, Matt's going to talk about some roadway projects, and we're going to give CDOT some time to talk about the canyon project, and then we're going to take real time action questions, and we're going to see how this goes.
Great.
Thank you for organizing that. Is this the city manager that you'd like us all to be together or virtual or, it's your call?
I have to be in Grand Junction.
I think if you can make, it's not mandatory for you guys to make it, I think it would be a nice show to.
Be there.
For many of you that can. It's just kind of a cool thing, and hopefully it goes without glitches, but if it has glitches, we'll work on it.
And is properly noticed, Carl.
Yeah, well, I assume so.
Yes.
I don't do the noticing, so.
Speaking about electronic participation in meeting, now that I'm going to bring that up, but having, having discovered several hours ago that there's now coronavirus in Colorado, there might potentially be a scenario where this body might not meet, but we still have to conduct the business of the city, so I guess I would, it, we don't have a meeting until April, and then it could really blow up, but I'd love to have maybe a, an idea if people feel comfortable having any emergency meeting participation, giving Deborah the authority to.
Well, there is, we're working through kind of legal issues, Tony's concerned about the meat, I actually think can, as long as underneath certain circumstances, if we find fairly narrowly, this is potentially a little bit different in the situation, and I, and I think it falls into two categories, one is creating a method for public participation, even if you guys are all in the room, if people are comfortable not coming in, so that they can be heard, and I think we need to work on the technology piece on that, whether that's phone in for public comment or something like that, the second one is if perhaps somebody might fall into a demographic that it is suggested that you don't participate in public places, that we have a way to deal with that as well, and so we're working through that just because I think that time period, to make sure legally that that might be impactful, and I just want to make sure that there's an opportunity to do it legally, but also to do it in such a way that there's meaningful participation for both you and the public, so we're working on that right now.
Great, keep us posted.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And I heard we got a small grant yesterday.
Technically, Water Director, yes, we got a tap funds from CDOT, a million dollars for, I think we should call it the 27th, it's a grade separated intersection, like pedestrian intersection.
At 27th.
At 27th and 80th.
So Cross 82.
Yeah, for both.
All for both?
Yeah.
Cross 82 and 27th.
That's what both of them are for, we don't know how, which they're going to go after funding, so we've gotten two million, RAFTA has four, we're going to continue to go after funding and figure it out. We don't know whether it would, it should be a tunnel or pedestrian.
If it's a tunnel, can we call it the sunlight tunnel?
Like at Passau, what did they call their tunnel?
Maybe darkness tunnel.
It's not dark.
Very nice. Thank you for Terry for sticking with that.
Thank you, Terry. City attorney.
Unfortunately, serious.
I want to make that motion.
Yeah, all yours, I can.
Correspondence incoming and outgoing.
Yes. In your, in correspondence, there is a letter, a couple comments on the proposed changes to the NEPA process, you guys talked about this, and as just to bring it back, we have brought it back, so I think the request is, if you're still interested to have the mayor sign it, we're getting that.
Who wrote that, that was, well done?
I was actually, it came in, it was the primarily, yeah, yeah, just we tweaked a little bit here and there, fairly minor, cleaned it up and put it on there.
Great, yeah, I thought it looked good.
Did I miss this?
It says an attachment in correspondence.
In correspondence.
I didn't look at that, so that's probably why I missed it.
That's why you read so quickly.
I was impressed.
Nothing's ever there.
Two hours, he had a whole thing.
Yeah, I tried doing two hours, that was a problem.
So.
It's like hilarious to do that.
I don't know if the mayor sent it out.
All it was was general talking, but yeah, I felt like it, yeah.
Yes, please.
We all good?
Thank you.
All right.
They're reading it now, can you get that?
I, Tony Hershey, moved to go into executive session to conduct a conference with the city measure and city attorney for the purposes of discussing the city's purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer of civil real property, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations, and instructing negotiators, and conduct a conference with the city attorney to receive legal advice in accordance with Colorado revised statutes 24, 6402, A, B, and E, related to the RMR and the 27th Street Bridge.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm fixing this for you.